Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Would everyone please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Just a couple announcements tonight. The Board wishes all dads have a very happy Father's Day this coming Sunday. And a reminder that school will be out very soon, so please take caution on the roadways where there'll be children out there playing. Next, we have approval of minutes and warrants. We have May 18th and also May 19th, which were tabled for Mrs. Wang. She's not here tonight, so I think we should table until the next time she's... If anybody's good with that?
She indicated in her email that she would drop off written copy to Helen tomorrow.
Tomorrow?
Yeah.
Alright, so we can put that on our next agenda. So the next will be June 1st at 6:00 PM. And the only member absent was Mr. Lara.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next, we have also June 1st at 7:00 PM. And Mr. Lara was also absent.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And we have June 3rd at 6:00.
We're gonna have to table which one?
The next one, June 3rd.
Yep. We only have two guys here, two people.
Yep, alright, we're gonna have to table June 3rd. Good catch, John.
And... Table the next one too.
And the next one. And June 8th, we'll have to table.
Sorry.
Mr. Chairman, I do have warrants this evening.
Okay.
Three warrants. The first are the payroll deductions for the last pay period, June 1st, in the amount of $5,458.65. And I have the current payroll for the pay period ending June 13th, in the amount of $38,993.96. And I have the vendor warrant dated June 15th, in the amount of $81,557.29. And that's a little higher due to Tri-County dispersment and trash is on here. So that's what bumped that up. It's usually around 40s.
Very good.
Motion to approve the warrants.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next, we have town boards and officials. First on the agenda is Ronald Landry, Chief of Police and Fire.
Good evening, how are you?
You're on there for the two topics. We talked about the conservation being...
Okay. Let me go first, but I want it to probably be a little lengthy. Good evening. Couple of months ago, we advertised to fill the vacancy within the police department for a full-time police officer. Officer McNevich left, and he went to Grafton. At that point, we advertised for 30 days. Received many qualified applicants. So we began the process of identifying the best pick for Millville. My nephew, Cody Landry, notified me that he was going to apply for the job. So, once he did that, I realized, to keep everything transparent, I took my position out of the equation and had nothing to do with the hiring process. I called Ethics. Ethics told me my nephew was not an immediate family member, so there's no ethic question involved. I did file a disclosure with the town clerk's office to make sure everything was transparent. From that point, Sergeant Coop, a union representative and lieutenant from the town of Sutton, they got together and they went through all the applicants. And they greeted each applicant, and then they interviewed the applicants. I recused myself. I had no idea what was going on. I didn't even look at the applicants because I wanted to make sure everything was transparent and there was no issue of favoritism whatsoever. At the end of that process, I did receive the top three candidates. And my nephew, Cody Landry, was in the top three. So now I realize I have to recuse myself once again from the final interview process. So at that point, I contacted three chiefs of police. Three individuals very knowledgeable of Millville and what we need to make our organization as good as it is. It was the Northbridge Chief, Wally Watchill. It was the Grafton Police Chief Grapo. And it was the Mendon Chief, Randy Horn, who I am familiar with. All three of those chiefs I am familiar with. It's hard not to be familiar with chiefs because I go to all the chiefs' meetings, so we're familiar with each one. They came into the station. They conducted a very intense interview. I was not present for the interviews. All I asked for was they identify the best candidate for the town of Millville. That's all I told them. I made them aware that one candidate was my nephew, and I told them to treat him no differently than the other two candidates. Meaning, you don't give him points or you take away points. And that's my only message to them. At the end of their questioning, they rated once again the top three. And Cody Landry, my nephew, finished number one. Now, at that point, I reviewed all of the applicants just to make sure everything was fair. And I have no doubt in my mind that Cody was the best candidate for the job. So later in the evening, I'm proposing that we appoint Cody as the next full-time police officer for the town of Millville. I didn't bring him here tonight because I want to discuss what occurred with the Board of Selectmen. I simply didn't want to give you this appointment letter and say, "Cody Landry", then someone would've said, "Do you know him, chief?" I do know him. I should know him. He's my nephew. He's a very smart, educated individual. He received his bachelor's degree. Received, I think, a 3.80 average, if you may have it in his resume. He attended the police academy, paid for himself. He's very ethical, very straightforward. Spoke to me about the position, and I told him very frankly, I was looking for someone who was gonna stay. And he's promised me he will stay. So, I just want everyone to understand that he is the best choice. He came out number one not because he is my nephew. He came out number one because he earned it. And the other candidates, to be frank, had some baggage. And that's why they're candidates. And that's why they come from other departments sometimes, because they do have baggage. There's some candidates who simply want to come to Millville as a stepping stone. Because once you become a police officer in one community, it's very easy to get a job in another community. Especially the way we train our personnel. They're very marketable. So that is why generally when someone comes here, they put their time in. It's very easy for them to find a job somewhere else. I'm very proud of that because we're very good at what we do, and we have some excellent candidates. The three chiefs who interviewed my nephew said they would hire him in a minute. So, that's the story behind the story. That's why I want to present you with all the facts and present you with his resume so you can see the type of candidate that he is. But I felt it was necessary to do that before we went to the second step of the actual appointment. Now, I hope the board does see it that way, and they do vote to appoint him. And if you do, I'll invite him back for your next meeting with his family if we can have more of a formal swearing-in with the town clerk. His brother, Craig Landry, very proud of my other nephew. He's also a police officer in the town of Hopedale. I believe Cody had the opportunity to go there as well, but he wants to go to Millville. Is he as good as me? Time will tell.
I was gonna ask.
Well, they think they are. They think they are. But time will tell. You know, I'm much older and wiser, and they're young. So that's why I'm here for that appointment. If you have any questions, please ask.
Don't we talk about it two days ago?
I think everyone's... Know me long enough. If he wasn't the right guy for the job, he wouldn't be here. I have no issue with that. He's a nephew. He's gonna do well in life. He'll move on if he wanted to. So, he earned it, and that's why he's number one. That's all.
Okay.
Okay. That's it for that.
Okay.
The second issue, Helen, if I'm correct, it's 172 Main Street?
Correct.
Okay.
71.
Okay. Because we have no agent, the town bylaws, it does say that I can take action and move forward on that property.
Right.
So, I have no issue...
Can you explain the problem so the people know?
Okay.
Because you're saying 172.
It's long-going. You know, I've been brought into this, you know, hours later.
Yep.
So I don't know the entire issues there yet. I realize it's earth removal. That's one of the issues. Some debris that was dumped there, maybe a second issue. The issue of possibly a farm or planting blueberries is the third issue. The use of the land. There's many, many issues involved, from conservation through earth removal. So I'm invited into the process now, which I don't mind. But there's a learning curve for me. So, I'm asking the Board of Selectmen for your guidance. This is what I've done. I've been checking the site on a regular basis. The individual, the owner, has been there a couple of times, but I have yet to see him do any work. From what I can see, unless a neighbor has more information than I have, he more or less stopped what he was doing. So, given that, I've compiled all the information I could find through AMI-Soverland, and I have a jacket, a folder, of all the information that I'd like to bring forward to the town's attorney. And I spoke to Helen, and I spoke to the current attorney. So my question is a couple of them. Do I bring it to the acting current attorney? Or would you like me to wait till July 1 and explain it to the new attorney? Because I really, I don't want to explain it twice. If I explain it to Mr. Brackett, do I have to again meet with the new attorney and explain it to the new attorney in 15 days or 14 days? So, once you give me that answer, that's great. My other question is, what are you looking for? That's the biggest thing I need to know. What does the town expect this gentleman to do? I have no idea whatsoever.
Well, he's doing illegal things there, Ron.
No, no, I understand that. If that's all stopped, what do we want from this point on?
Well, we want everything done according to DEP law, rules and laws, also. If he's done with the earth removal, then it has to be brought back to his blueberry farm, as he calls it. Well, not brought back to it, but it has to be brought to, not brought back to, but brought to a blueberry farm stage, or brought back to a vacant field. But loom needs to come back.
I have checked the site.
Whether it's blueberries or grass, something needs to be grown there, not sand.
I have checked the site.
It wasn't a desert before.
And it looks like, off the top of my head, he may be at least 15 feet below the initial grade.
Right.
And you can see that by looking at the existing utility tower.
You need to bring it back to its natural habitat, the way it was. And that's with loom. And that's to get the steel and the garbage and the hazardous waste. And whatever else he dumped into the DOT doesn't want there, he's gotta get it out of there.
So that's the question I'm going to ask the attorney is exactly what you just mentioned to me. Can we make him bring it back to those levels?
Well, I, if I'm correct, when you do earth removal, you don't have to bring it back to the original grade, but you gotta bring it back so whatever natural habitat was there before is back.
He does have a lot of loom on the left-hand side, I've noticed. Is it enough to spread the entire property? I don't think so.
But the question now is, is it his loom or is it the people's properties' loom?
I would think it would be his loom.
Well, we don't know that. Because some of the people that were here in the audience say that doesn't belong to them. That belongs to them, not him. So, we're gonna have to find out. Because if he starts taking their dirt, their earth, then we're gonna have another problem.
Yeah, I think that question is best asked by the butters. And they could probably testify whether or not it's their loom or not. If it's his loom and he simply spreads it over the entire property, is that enough? And do we say, "Okay, now you have to stop planting blueberries", or you do nothing there at all, or you sell the property, do what you want, but you can no longer dig? But the reason why I ask is, when I speak to the attorney, this is gonna be a long, long affair. And it's gonna be a costly affair if we have to get involved with the court system and bring this person to court. I guess it's under my authority to start issuing this person violations and tickets. And that's something I'll speak to Helen about along with the attorney. I don't know of a mechanism in place to start issuing tickets. I've never issued an earth removal ticket.
Yeah.
So I don't, I don't even know what it looks like, to be frank. I'll have to get that from the attorney.
You mean like a cease and desist sort of, he's gotta stop.
That was issued already.
Right, you got the letter.
I got the letter. That was issued already.
So that's done.
So I think the biggest...
So moving forward, Ron, with that said...
What do we do?
With that said, moving forward, you have to cease and desist. We're hoping that if he does try to go back there and do something, that the residents of the town call the town hall, call Helen, call the police department. They'll let them know that there's activity down there because we need to make sure he abides by the law instead of doing some of the stuff he's been doing in the past.
Right. Sergeant, Sergeant Coop and Lane Shepherd, Officer Shepherd, they're very aware of the circumstance. And they have been there. They go by every day and they check on it. They report to me if there's any activity. And if there is, I will go there myself, and I'll start documenting what I see. That way, when I write the violations...
Yeah, because I know the residents are very aware, and they basically are ears and eyes too for the town. And there's an impact to their families and everything else. So if they see activity, it'd be a great, if they could call the police or Helen, to let them know that they're bad.
I have no reservations bringing him to court. I just want to make sure I do it the right way, the legal way, for no one gets in trouble. So that's why, so going back to my original question, bless you. Would you like me to bring this to Gary Brackett, or do you want me to wait until I know?
I have a question here. Don't we have an overlap starting today?
June 15th, starting today.
Starts today.
There's an overlap, so...
The two attorneys are working together, right?
So...
That started today.
I think you make an appointment, I guess, with Mr. Brackett?
And she, and Mrs., and Mrs., uh...
Saint Andre.
Saint Andre may join in with you for that meeting.
So, who should I call?
There, I would speak with Attorney Saint Andre out of Petrini and Associates in Framingham. She's meeting with Mr. Brackett this Thursday.
Okay.
But because this issue could end up going well into the future, I think we should work with the attorney we're going to have.
And that's why I waited a little bit, waited a couple of weeks, because I didn't want to explain it twice, to be frank. I'm busy enough, I don't have a good assistant.
There's another point. That the silt bales, the bales to protect the wetlands, it was not installed properly. And I think the Conservation Commission, you'd have to speak with them about getting that, you know, in order.
I'll say this, DEP, from what I understand, will actually be of very little help. We've spoken to them. Truly not their thing so much. They believe it's a town issue. They'd rather see us address the issue more than DEP.
But they'll give you guidance, won't they, on certain things?
Not legalities, I don't think. That will come from the attorney.
They'll give you copies of, they'll state certain laws.
Right.
They'll send you...
We called, and they're really, they're not willing to come here and start issuing violations and start bringing people to court. We have to.
They want us and our attorneys to do it.
Exactly right. So, we'll start that process as soon as I speak to the attorney. And then I'll come back with regular reports to let you know where we are, where it's going, and what we can do.
Okay.
So that's the start.
Yep.
So we're working on it. So, and I will encourage any resident to call, like you mentioned, John. If they're working there and I don't see them, I tried, you know, I can't be there every second.
No, well, that's why we want the residents to call us.
That's why we want the residents involved. Because if he brings in all the other...
Do community policing over there.
Stuff he tries to bury it, if they call and we catch him and...
I will be meeting with him as well after I speak to the attorney.
Did you, did you get the letter from their attorney?
That's the one I just asked you about.
It's in the folder, I believe. I have quite the folder ready to go, so I'll make sure that one's in there. Helen, did you send that over to me?
I did, but it came with a rather large packet. If you wanted to see the attachments, I've got them in my office. I didn't...
Do you need this one back?
No, you can keep that one.
Okay, alright, thank you. So, I think it'll go very well. It's just how much energy we have to put into it.
Aye.
That's all.
Okay.
Okay?
Alright, thank you, chief. Mr. Cravelo not here?
Yeah, he's not here. I'm not sure. Maybe he...
Well, we can wait if he shows up.
I'm not sure if maybe, because I know he asked me to just prepare a memo, which I did. Maybe I misunderstood. It could be that he didn't intend on coming and giving the memo and the attachment. We're just going to satisfy that.
Alright. Alright, so, excuse me. That Richard sent was, "The Municipal Center Building Committee was created by the Board of Selectmen in early 2014 and met at duly posted meetings about 12 times between April 2014 and June 2015. The last and final meeting of the committee was held on June 9, 2015. Please see the attached sheet with outlines of the committee's final three recommendations to the Board of Selectmen. Thank you for the opportunity to serve the town in this capacity. Richard Cravelo, Richard Hertu, and Helen Coffin, Jerry Finn, and Les Davis." "After evaluating all possible courses of action, this committee recommends to the BOS that the existing town hall not be refurbished or renovated to be used as town offices, and that construction of a new town hall would be the best possible option for the town. After ruling out the feasibility of moving into available space in an existing building, this committee recommends that the Municipal Center Building Committee, having completed its work as charged by the BOS, be dissolved. Further, it is recommended by the committee that the BOS establish a new Town Hall Study Committee with the responsibility of the following. One, establish space requirements for new town hall offices. Two, review existing building for feasibility of housing municipal offices. Three, develop a budget for the build-out existing space. If applicable, yeah. Four, locate a suitable, buildable site for a new town hall. Five, develop a budget for the construction of a new town hall. Six, develop funding strategies for new municipal offices. And lastly, develop a plan for the possible reuse of disposition of the existing Longfellow Municipal Center." And that's it.
Motion to accept...
The dissolve?
Except the report is written.
Oh, except the report, yep. All in favor?
Aye.
Now, motion to accept the dissolvement of the Municipal Center Building Committee?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And now, um... Look for a motion to start hunting down some candidates for a Town Hall Study Committee.
My comment on that would be that Mr. Cravelo did a great job doing this evaluation and, you know, like, it'd be a pity if he were not on a study committee going forward.
Well, if he wants to. I'm not gonna just appoint him without his, you know, a letter saying he's interested, you know. It's gonna be a lot of work, so... So if you're listening, Richard, we would love for you to be on that committee. So anybody, anybody in town that would like to be on the Town Hall Study Committee with all the responsibilities as I have just read, you can contact the Town Hall, Helen Coffin, or Kristen Herrick. And, you know, we'd love to review all applicants.
Mr. Cravelo is also concerned that, you know, action needs to be taken. He'd hate to see this thing get kicked down the road, yeah.
Well, it's not gonna, but we need people to apply for it.
Yeah, so, but, again, establish some type of goalposts to get that committee appointed. So, we have to go out and do some recruiting and that kind of thing? I would encourage that.
Yeah. I don't think this board can be part of any type of recruiting or anything as this elected board. We would have to be appointed to a committee to look for a committee. Unfortunately, municipal law is not... So, this is our campaign right here, this message. And anyone listening, maybe they can't help, but they may know somebody that is well-versed in this particular subject and may want to help us out. Please, and even if you don't know anybody, pass a word to your neighbors, everything. This project really, really is important, needs to move. If you remember, all the roof structure issues we had this past winter with all that snow and ice up there, it's getting to a point where it may not be a safe building to do business in anymore. And then, we're gonna be really caught between a rock and a hard place. So, it is a very important mission that we need to move forward pretty quickly. Thank you in advance for anybody's interest.
The chair asked for a motion to proceed with establishing that. Was there a motion?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
So now, once we get some applicants, we can start appointing immediately with the committee established. Okay. Next, we have Valerie Hagerty, and to discuss the MES Playground Committee status updates.
In addition to the set of minutes that were in your packet, there was on the pile on top of the counter...
From Brackett, Lucas, right?
Yes, yep.
Just had it too. Just had it in my hands.
I have extras.
That's it, somewhere. You can start. I have it here somewhere.
I have extras. Does anybody else need a copy? I have an extra.
There it is.
Okay. And attached to that letter, if you actually go past the first two pages, you'll see the draft agreement that the school board is working on. Good evening. Good evening.
Good evening.
I would like to give you, um, some background on how we've gotten to this point. Um, I would like to discuss the town's lawyer's letter and the working draft agreement that the school committee is having their lawyer work upon. Uh, we've been working hard this year, um, contacting the former building inspector, the highway surveyor, the tree watering, and other town committees and departments that we can think of regarding the site location and to get preliminary approval of that location. So, that was one of our main concentrations this week, is to make sure that there's, you know, this year that there wasn't any problems with the site. In August and September, um, I asked Ms. Coffin, Mrs. Kaufman, about the possibility of a town article being needed, um, because I looked over the submission of the town meeting warrant and articles guidelines. Um, and one question, does the article improve a town asset? I thought the answer was yes. So, I spoke with, um, Mrs. Kaufman about that, and, um, it was decided that it would be best to ask town councils. And that is, his response is that, um, April twenty-third letter in regards to that inquiry. I had drafted a, because we hadn't received that, uh, letter yet, I drafted up an article that I submitted, but it, uh, we took it out because, or Mrs. Kaufman took it out because it wasn't necessary. On March twenty-fifth, I emailed Mrs. Kaufman regarding questions on what to bring to the school committee because she recommended, after, she recommended, um, me sharing the Town Council's letter with Mr. Himmelberger and meeting with him and providing it to school committee to move forward on getting their approval regarding the site. And as Mr. Fletcher's letter recommends, an agreement between the school committee and the town regarding the use of the playground and the installation of the playground. Going really quick in my notes. Uh, on May thirteenth, I met with the school committee to request that they approve the concept of the playground, the site of the playground, and to request them that they have their attorney draft an agreement between the school district and the town. Um, discussion took place on what should be covered by the agreement, um, with the school committee. On May twenty-eighth, the school committee, um, had the matter on their agenda, but it was tabled because the attorney hadn't, um, had a chance to work on the, the matter. So then, on the school committee's June eleventh meeting, uh, they received the working draft that I've provided to you. Um, and they had some more discussions regarding it, um, and there, there were problems with paragraphs one, three, seven, and eight. Um, they wanted to see some more work done with that. Paragraph three should be, um, oh, par- I'm sorry, let me start with paragraph one. Paragraph one, um, should be trained, changed to "an approximately fifty by one hundred playground" in the second sentence of paragraph one. And I asked for approximately, just in case we're not exactly fifty and one hundred. We hope to be close, if not exact. Um, paragraph three, they wanted to see, um, should be "for as long as the playground exists, not for as long as the town uses the playground", which is in the last sentence of that paragraph. Which, in speaking with, um, the town might, uh, you might decide to rework that paragraph or have your own comments to that paragraph. Um, and I would like to maybe come back another time after I have the input from Chief Landry about what he would recommend, um, for when the playground would be in use. I don't wanna speak for him. Uh, if you would like to come up and speak, it's up to him. If you would rather wait and send me that, then I'm okay with that, too.
I believe that playgrounds are great, a great opportunity for another area of the kids. I have a concern regarding the location of the playground for safety problems and security of the playground after hours. It's so secluded. It's so out of the beaten path. There's no home in the area that can look at the playground on a regular basis. There is going to be vandalism. There is going to be things broken. There's going to be graffiti. That's just the nature of the beast when you build something that far off the beaten path. We see it with the small playground behind Town Hall. Someone damaged a couple of weeks to get that playground. There's been graffiti in that playground, and we're there every day. We see people and we, we chase away the older kids. The location of the proposed playground is gonna be very difficult to monitor. So, my input would be you would have to close the facility when school is closed for the day and not allow the general public to go there. Because I, to be frank, I don't wanna be responsible for that playground. And we will have to babysit that playground. I'm speaking out of experience with this type of facility.
Yep.
They're very difficult to protect because kids are gonna wanna use it, the older kids are gonna wanna use it. And unfortunately, things happen. So, my only concern is the, the safety and the security of the playground and the people who will utilize that playground after hours. And we don't, on the police side, have the manpower to sit and babysit a playground. I think it's a great idea, don't get me wrong. And the last thing I wanna see is that playground damaged after you spent hundreds of thousands of dollars to construct it. So, we can possibly add surveillance cameras that can be watched twenty-four-seven and monitored through dispatch. That's one alternative. Or we can fence the playground in and restrict access to the playground after hours. If you choose neither, this is a preemptive warning, there will be damage. Uh, unfortunately, it's just a beast that's in society right now. You're not gonna be able to protect it all the time. That was my concern to that. That's the decision. Can you limit who uses the playground?
And at that point...
I don't know.
Yeah, I think we, uh, 'cause that's what, one of the questions that we proposed to Town Council, and, and we had told him that we were actually going to dr- limit it during school hours uh, for just the students, and then open it up to the public until basically dusk or closing time, um, whatever the board decided, but it would be open from like, say, school got out at three o'clock, from three to maybe six. Which, I did not have Chief Landry's, um, input at that point, so we might have to talk to Town Council again. I'm sure Town Council, you'll probably want to provide a working draft to Town Council anyways of this agreement to advise you also what they might recommend, that the board might want in this agreement. And so, with the Chief's input, something would have to be decided to see whether or not, how we would go forward with limitations, if that's what the board decides it wants to limit.
Mr. Chairman, I think, Valerie, um, I think one of the big questions was if the decision was to restrict it, um, we would require an article at town meeting to have the townspeople approve, that it would be specific for use by the school only. So, we may need to, if it comes to that, put an article on, on the, the special.
And then, I'm not quite sure who actually would have to put the article, because the way that the attorney wrote the letter is that it's, and the way that, um, discussions at school committee, uh, regarding the letter, talked about it. You have the lease agreement, and so, the school district is leasing the property, so they're like, basically controlling the property right now, is, could be a misunderstanding. That's their understanding, it seems like. Um, and so, they would decide, they might have to bring the article in order to change land, or maybe it's a combined article between the town and the school committee in order to get the playground installed.
Yep.
Not quite sure which way would have to be.
That would have to be the two attorneys would have to decide.
Talk about it and decide, um, which way, because of the lease agreement and the regional agreement.
Yep.
Um, we would need input on that.
My only question I, I'm sorry to ask that.
No, that's okay.
Any damage or any repairs needed to that playground? Would that come from the recreation committee, or that come from somewhere separate?
What we're trying to do, um, and it will be in discussions also with this town, is that, um, we're not quite sure, I have questions out to the town lawyer, too, on whether or not us as a committee can actually, I know we can have donations. We can raise donations. I'm not quite sure whether or not we can raise all the donations or find all the grants to do this. So, we might get an agreement in place and then end this committee and become like a Friends of the Parks and Recs in order to get the funds to, to build this playground. And at that point, we'd be looking for agreements regarding maintenance and further that. But our, one of our goals for when we fund, uh, fundraise is to have money left over, hopefully between ten thousand and twenty thousand dollars left over for maintenance of the playground. Because it will...
Well, I'm on the recreation committee.
Right.
And we really have no money to accomplish what we wanna accomplish with the present ball fields and playground.
Yep.
So, if we add another playground, we're gonna need more money to support that playground as well as the other ones that we have.
Right.
So, I just wanted to know that from my own knowledge, if we have to go back next year with our new budget seeking more funds.
Well, we, in the very beginning of this project, like, we made it clear, this board made it clear that we, unfortunately, cannot fund any of this at all at this point, maintenance or anything, 'cause of the situation we're in. So, there is an understanding.
And I'm hoping...
In writing, but there is an understanding that we've been...
I think it's a great idea. The kids need it.
Oh, us too.
And I am one hundred percent, percent behind it.
Yep.
Just the security of it. I hate to see something like that, you know, fall apart because we simply can't protect the asset.
Right.
Uh, so I think one of those two avenues we have to explore. I think if we do spend the money on cameras.
Right.
And we watch the cameras through dispatch, we can try that without restricting the public.
Right.
But if it doesn't work, then we'd have to.
Right.
Uh, one thing's regarding the maintenance, um, I would hope and try not to leave this as a burden upon the volunteers. To leave you with enough money to maintain the playground, unforeseen vandalism that really destroys it, to maintain it for a number of years, and hopefully that puts the town in a better position. At that point, I'm looking, hopefully, to have this ten to thousand to twenty thousand would go for at least ten years. Um, hopefully, this equipment, I mean, there's some playgrounds that don't need any maintenance for twenty years. I'm hoping this money would be there for at least ten, you know, five to ten years, so that way, hopefully, the town is in a better position. You have the funds for at least a number of years.
I believe if you buy a quality playground, the one that's in the back, it will last a long time. Unfortunately, things do break.
Yep.
Right.
Because they're made for ten-year-olds and others, not sixteen, seventeen, and that's when things break. But if you buy a quality set, you'll be fine. So, good luck, because I think it's a wonderful idea.
Okay, thank you. So, I think, at least with paragraph three, we might for maintaining and repairing, expand upon that, especially with the Chief's concerns. Paragraph seven, um, that was going to be changed to "the town makes the rules", and we'll also have to, when developing what the rules would be, keep, keep Landry's concerns in mind for when establishing those rules. I don't know if you have to really spell out the rules right now with this agreement. Um, it reserves a right, but by construction time, I think we should definitely have them in place, if not before.
Yep.
And then, paragraph eight, um... I wasn't quite sure how the town could satisfy this at first because it says that we would ensure, upon signing the agreement, you have to have the playground insured. Playground's not gonna be in for a year, at least, maybe two, maybe longer, but hopefully within two years. So, I wasn't quite sure how we could satisfy that. Um, Mr. Wozeniak, who is on the school committee, um, thought that just a general letter, comprehensive insurance that this town probably already has in a letter stating that you have that insurance would satisfy that agreement. But, um, I would like to either have our committee contact the, um, insurance agent, or if Ms. Kaufman wants to contact the insurance agent regarding that requirement.
Has that been across to Town Hall or beyond?
Uh, when Karen Palumbo of our committee contacted the insurance agent, she said the, um, the increased cost to the insurance was like eighty dollars for the playground, a year.
That's then. What about now? You've made changes?
Well, we haven't really made any changes. This concept is still there. The site location is still there. So, the original question about a playground and what it would do to your insurance hasn't really changed. I mean, we can fi- we can definitely ask the insurance agent that and find out what the difference would be.
And that's where I'm going with it.
So, you would like us to contact the insurance agent regarding this and to see what the ramifications?
Because she might have certain questions that you wanna ask, that she needs to ask. It also might hinge on what kind of equipment you've got in the playground, also affects what it's gonna cost you for insurance.
Yeah, I, I believe it's based on the estimated value of the equipment.
Okay.
I think it's replacement value. So, I, I assume that she probably gave him an estimated value.
Right, and that hasn't changed.
That's how he based that number. So, I, I can't imagine it would change by a heck of a lot unless that value changed.
Okay. Uh, would you like us to contact him regarding this type of letter?
Sure, if you still have his contact information. It was, um, David Labonte. And I can email that to you if you'd like.
I'll have Karen work on that, 'cause she was the initial contact. And then, I don't know if the town, um, has any, would like to review the article, the, uh, agreement, and if you have recommendations that you wanna see in it. I mean, you have a say in this agreement. If there's something you wanna see in this agreement or something you don't understand, we have to get you the answers.
I'm pretty sure this board will agree that we'll have our lawyers take a look at this before we say yes to anything.
Well, right now, if you have any comments regarding it, I can take it back to the school committee, and they could have their attorney work on it and put in some of their comments, or some of your wants and desires, if you have anything right now.
I'd rather have our attorney look at it over, not the school committee.
Yeah.
And the board also just got that right before this meeting, so they probably haven't had the opportunity to really read and digest the information. So, maybe I can get back to you on that. If they have any questions, they can let me know.
Yeah, and I can bring the questions to the school committee, and what I'm saying is that the school committee's attorney will take your concerns, maybe address them in the agreement, and then you may ha- provide that to your attorney, okay? So, your attorney will definitely look over this agreement. But if you have something, maybe the, the school committee attorney can write them in, and then your attorney can fully address your concerns at that point, too.
Yep.
Valerie, was it Attorney Gould who drafted that, or does the committee have a new attorney?
The committee did not say.
It's not Mr. Wozeniak, though.
No, Mr. Wozeniak is on the school committee as a member. And he was, he had the concerns regarding those paragraphs. He wanted the school committee attorney to address his concerns regarding those paragraphs. Um, one of the things that's, he also had wanted to see in it was the agreement to also have indemnity and hold harmless, hold harmless agreements between the town and the school committee. So, and that would be like, if something I, I, if I'm correct, should have you alert, definitely make sure. If something happened during school hours, you wouldn't be responsible. Something happened after school hours, they wouldn't be responsible because it's a different entity. And I guess, um, not one hundred percent sure, but I think both of the town and the school... but I think both of the town and the school committee has to ensure the playground. Town for after-school hours, school for during-school hours. Which is what might be already in place regarding the building. I'm not positive on that. But it almost seems to me like it might. Do you know?
We insure it a hundred percent. They, they insure the contents, but we insure the building and the, the personal liability and property. That, that's all the town.
Okay. So, you kinda got, you got renters, rent, they have renters insurance and you have homeowner's insurance.
Yep.
Any questions, comments, directions?
Probably spelt my name wrong.
Did they really? I'm gonna get that fixed for you.
My first name.
Okay.
See it? Cause that, that's not my name.
Okay. You're right. They got all the letters in there.
They got the letters all just mixed up.
Yeah, okay. So, they are going to, on their next meeting, the attorney's gonna have another working draft for them. As soon as the school committee is satisfied with their working draft, they're gonna forward it to the board for your consideration for you to start looking into it.
Okay.
Okay? Well, thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Normal kids will thank you someday. First public forum?
Okay, just a little bit of an update on one seventy-one.
Okay.
On his corn farm that he said he was gonna go to, uh, Wright's Dairy Farm. Wright's Dairy Farm hasn't, does not wanna do anything with him, does not do any business. They, uh, gentleman Steve, one of the owners, I talked to last weekend. And he, uh, took a look at the site and thought the guy was crazy for thinking he was gonna try to grow anything in that sand. Conservation Commission has been out there, they have looked at it and they're doing their part on the violations of the wetlands side, you know, that. The, uh, dirt that was the question before actually is on his property, but it's in, within the buffer zone where we grabbed it. So, that's something I guess town council can figure that one out. And we were informed by other neighbors, uh, that it's not just illegal dumping where we thought it was. It's further up by the four plexes. You get a lot of illegal dumping and burying up there. So, this is that. And there's also a lot of, uh, cave-ins starting to happen on the property now, and a lot of going down.
Okay.
There's actually one hole big enough that, that a man our size could actually fall in.
Okay.
Hopefully it won't be another Jessica kind of thing in the well.
Yeah, right.
So, I mean, it's, nothing is, there's no signs saying no trespassing. I mean, there's no, you know, everything's just out in the open. Anybody can play, kids can go in there. And that's our biggest concern right now is.
Yeah.
That trench is on his property, that the open hole you just said?
Oh, yeah, absolutely, yeah, yeah.
Well, we should send the building inspector out there because that, that's a danger.
Yeah.
We don't wanna leave that open, so.
I mean, there would, there would, there have been other cave-ins, but over time, you just, you just keep burying them, but this one is just getting bigger and bigger.
Right.
So.
Well, if that's a so-called construction site, then also we have some concerns on any hazards like that.
And he was just there, what was it, about two weeks ago, one night?
Last week.
Last week? He wa- he was there for a short time, pretty much pulled the front end load up to the front gate, there a couple minutes, and went back and did nothing. Uh, nothing's been moved on the property, nothing else has been, you know, debris has been removed, there's not been debris taken in, taken out, uh, or soil either way. So, it's pretty much, I guess he wanted to play with his tractor that day.
Yeah, right.
But, uh, calls were made on that, so the chief is aware of that.
Okay.
So, yeah, that's about it.
Like I said, you're, you're the ears and eyes over there to, to, to residents, you being one of the residents, so.
We have twenty-two households, uh, involved. You know, I just wish there was more people involved out of those twenty-two households. So, but we're, we're gonna continue it.
That's, that's the way it goes.
I mean, our biggest thing is.
Hard to get people.
Once we found out that he buried more stuff further up than he obviously moved out, I mean, is he gonna take it out? I mean, I don't know if the town would force him to take that or not. I mean, I know, I heard about the DEP, I mean, they'd rather the town do it. I mean, we're a small town, I know it, it's pretty much, it's overwhelming for you folks, overwhelming for us. So, that's it.
Did you have the opportunity to meet with the new building inspector Wednesday night?
Thirty seconds, that's about it.
Okay.
So, we kinda briefed them really quick on it and went from there. That was at the, uh, border health meeting that we had. Border Health is involved in it also too. So, they, uh, doing their side. I guess we gotta talk to town council also.
Okay.
So, hopefully we just get a meeting, everybody together in the same room, it'd be so much easier.
Yeah, I know.
So, okay, thanks.
Okay, great, thank you. Anyone else for public forum? Correspondence, uh, I have nothing myself. We don't have, uh, oh, there is one. A lot of the, we used to do correspondence, you know, and I know we've stopped doing it, leaving it in there for everybody to just sign it and save a lot of paper.
Yep. You wanna start that again?
I think.
The problem was people weren't signing.
Oh, I know. So, Joe, we used to, in the mailbox, you know, in the general mailbox for us, is, you notice that one box that says correspondence, it's always empty. So, all the correspondence that, you know, the five copies that she does, we used to do one copy. And on the top have each one of our names and we check off as we. Just to save a lot of paper. Ink, ink's the expensive part, you know? So, what do you think, what do you think about doing, going back to that? You pick up your mail, you grab the correspondence, you read it while you're here and then.
It's not a problem.
If something grabs your interest, you can copy it right there, put the original back and then take it home and do some homework on it if you'd like. All right, so, should we do, do a vote on that or?
Yeah, I, it's as long as everybody's in agreement.
Okay.
There was a bridge report in there.
The br- Oh, there it is. So, this is from the DOT. Um, as part of the Nash, the Massachusetts Bridge Inspection Program, Mass DOT Highway Division performs an inspection of municipal-owned bridges that have a clear span of twenty feet or greater. These bridges are scheduled to be inspected every two years or less. For your records, this is a copy of the recent routine bridge inspection field report for the, for the reference municipal-owned bridge repair, rehabilitation, or reconstruction of any bridges to address the diff- the deficiencies reported in the owner custodian's responsibility. So, chapter ninety funds may be used for these purposes. Here we have the report and it's. So, they, they did our inspection, um, January seventh, this, of this year. And, um, it was Central Street over the Blackstone Canal, which is the, otherwise known as the John Dean Bridges. So, uh, it doesn't look like we needed.
We didn't buy a needy.
Yeah, yeah. We don't need any serious repairs. We've got ma- uh, general, um, preventative maintenance suggestions, really is, uh, before they become a, uh, offensive issue, these, we've got some cracked concrete and, uh, some stress cracks here and there and all that. This, this, the highway surveyor needs to address this stuff. As, as the cover page, the cover letter that they sent states that we can use chapter ninety funds and as we know, we've got quite a bit of those funds available, so. And Brian did get this report.
He did get a copy, yes.
So, uh, but as we all know, this board can't enforce anything getting done. But we are, uh, Brian, the highway surveyor, has this report. And we're, we're gonna assume that he's gonna move on it before it becomes an expensive repair. And that's, that is it. And going back to the, back to, um, the mailboxes, if, if you do see something that you wanna bring to a meeting, any, any of us can just let Helen know and it'll be on the following meeting's agenda. And that's, that's how we did it. We saved a lot of ink and paper. Anyway, so next we have appointments and resignations. We have resignation for the interim building commissioner. Um, and we'd like to thank you, uh, thank him for his, um, help that he gave us. Since the passing of Mr. Emity, um, he was a great help to the town. And, um, I would look for a motion to accept the interim inspector's resignation. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And just for the record, in case anyone doesn't know, we do have a new full-time inspector. And he, he is gonna be here as, as always on Wednesday nights from six to eight. He's, he's the building inspector in Needham and he'll be the building commissioner here in Millville. Um, next we have an appointment for the part-time police officer.
Mr. Chairman, that's an error, that should be full-time. I apologize for that.
Oh.
And that would be, um, Cody Landry and his, um, resume and the chief's cover letter was in your packet.
So. Yep.
Cody Landry for full-time position.
Is this through, through next June?
Um, he's actually on the list for reappointment, so this would just be through June thirtieth of two thousand fifteen.
Okay, and then.
And then your next vote will cover him.
All right.
Two thousand thirteen as read.
Second.
All right, all in favor? And, uh.
And then again, um, on the, the second page of your appointments, he's at the very bottom. It would be full-time on your appointment list.
So, Chief, you're gonna bring Cody for the next, next meeting?
Yes.
Now, don't put him on the work schedule that night. Sure, yeah, we coordinate that with, with her and, and him and she can swear him in here on camera.
Is that what you're saying?
Okay. Okay, um, I would like to read all the yearly appointments. And as I read the list, if you'd like to hold one, we'll hold. And then at the end, we'll appoint all that are, that were read unhold, unheld. And then we'll go back to the holds, if that works. So, we have one-year term through June thirtieth, two thousand sixteen. Animal control officer Gary Fagan. Animal control officer assistant Leonard Ranslow. Animal control officer alternate Jennifer Lewis. And that, and that Mrs. Lewis is depending, has pending return of satisfactory employment forms. Next, assistant collector Marcia Farrell. Blackstone River and Canal Committee Margaret Carroll. Building Commissioner Lawrence Lynch. Cable access committee, one vacancy. Colleen Curris, Margaret Carroll, Roland M. Barrett, Timothy Labonte, Jesse DeWalt. And, and then alternate. Well, Jesse is the alternate, sorry. Centennial Celebration Committee, there, there will be two vacancies as well as the names I'll read. Margaret Carroll, Jennifer Dean Wing, Keith Wing, Les Davis, Lois Salomi, Catherine Robinson, Karen Vernon, Ca- yeah, Karen Vernon, Tina Cook, and Ronald Landry. Central Mass Regional Planning Commission alternate Roland P. Barrett. Custodian of tax possessions Lisa Luru. Electrical inspector John Grenger. Assistant Elec- electrical inspector Larry Ray. Emergency management director Stephen Furno. Emergency management department Benton Phillips, John Hadley, Paul Ulette, Adam Batch- Bachelor, Bachelor, sorry about that. Uh, flag water Philip Clark. Green community committee.
Hold.
The whole committee?
No, the vacancy.
All right, we'll hold the vacancy. And the Green Community Committee is Joseph Reposa, Trish Benoit Rudin, Keith Boone, and Christopher Cappazoli. The local building inspector Lincoln Barber. Memorial Day Parade Committee Stephen Furno, Ronald Landry, Linda Bassett, Philip Clark, Lois Salomi, Lois LaFlemme, Laurie Anne Legere, Paul Ulette, Kathy Ulette. And Kathy is the alternate. Parks and Rec Jeff Sutherland, Ronald Landry, Kevin Delgizzi, and Karen Vernon. Parks and Rec MES Playground Subcommittee Karen Vernon, Karen Palumbo, Valerie Agate, Laurie Cunningham, Helena.
Leek.
Leaky? Leaked. Sorry about the pronunciation on that one. Uh, police department William J. Coop Junior, full-time sergeant. Blaine Shepard, full, full-time patrol officer. Scott Gould, full-time patrol officer. Stephen Diastani, part-time patrol officer. Jason A- Achu. Is that right? Thank you. Part-time patrol officer. Jeffrey Beckwith, part-time patrol officer. Michael D. Rosa, part tr- part-time patrol officer. Ryan Mas- Mastromado Medio.
Mastroteo.
Mastroteo, gee, all right. Part-time patrol officer. And Cody Landry, part-time patrol officer.
I'll do it full-time.
Uh, yep, that, that one should've been full-time as well, I'm sorry. We already talked about that. And these are the rest of the one-year terms. His town council is Petrini and Associates from Framingham. And the treasurer collector is Lisa Luru. Next, we have three-year appointments. And that'll be through June thirtieth, two thousand eighteen. Board of assessors Natalia Alwood. Board of registers Patricia Finn. Conservation commission Amy Sutherland. Council on Aging Patricia Lasia, Ellen Bowen, and Lois LaFlemme. Cultural council Jane Reggio and Jackie Lima. Police department Roy Sullivan, part-time patrol officer. Historical commission Margaret Carroll. Zoning Board of Appeals Thomas Mulvaney. Is there a motion to?
We got a new one tonight.
To read the appointments as, as read, with the exception of the one hold.
Motion to approve the, um, appointments as read.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I gotta talk to, uh. Yep. And I gotta talk about the Central Mass. The other Central Mass partner I had.
Uh, the planning board appoints that one.
Oh, okay. She ain't backing out.
On the vacancy, uh, a few meetings ago, I requested that Brian Faulkner be put on the agenda.
Yeah, I remember that, but I thought we had said to hold off for now. Was that comment not me?
For that night.
Oh, for that night. Oh, okay.
Okay, I would like, uh, Mr. Faulkner's, uh, indicated to me that he would participate in that, that committee.
Brian Faulkner?
Faulkner.
Oh, Brian Faulkner, oh, I know. I know Brian, okay. All right, so.
You're gonna appoint that committee now?
Huh?
You're gonna appoint that committee?
Yeah.
Oh, you, you made, okay, well, motion. You make the motion.
Appoint Brian Faulkner as Green Community Committee member.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, thank you to everybody. We understand that everything's, um, a thankless job, not very well-paid, if paid at all. And, um, everybody that benefits from the results of your hard work, um, I'm sure appreciates all your hard work. So, thank you. Okay, so next we have, uh, Helen, Executive Secretary report.
Um, just a couple of quick items. Um, on Monday evening, June twenty-second at six o'clock, we've got the walk, um, on the property for C- with CM RPC.
Right.
Should I post that as a meeting? Will I have a quorum or?
Sure. I will. Now, is everybody gonna start in Oxbridge at Burnett Mill? I'm going to.
You are?
The planning board's going and my ride'll be there, so I guess I'll go.
You're stuck.
So it's, anyway, just for the record, it is at Nineteen Depot Street, the old Burnett Mill in Oxbridge, at four-thirty. And from there, we're going to, um, huh? What's that? Well, then, no, then after that, uh, I believe is.
Five fifteen.
Five fifteen, there it is. At five fifteen, we'll be moving to, um, the Old Cock and Kettle, where the railroad tracks run through there. That's meeting location number two. And then at six PM, we'll be here at one eighty-one Main Street, at the locked gate of the, where the railroad crossing is between, uh, Valley Disposal and, and, um, Duffy's Tavern.
Bring bug spray.
And Bri- yeah, bring bug spray and, uh, heavy boots.
If you're going for the walk.
Yeah, yeah, if you're gonna walk through, just definitely bring bug spray and, and some hiking shoes, for sure. On Monday, yeah? Anything else?
So should I post that for six? Or do you want me to start that at four-thirty and follow this agenda?
Uh, yeah, start it at four-thirty, follow that agenda. That way, if anyone, if we all decide to be there, we'll be able to speak if we want to.
Um, I learned today that, um, we'll have at least two additional budget transfers that the board will need to sign off or at least consider.
Okay.
Um, the Finance Committee, um, I have not heard back from Mr. Corbello yet. I did ask him if he could gather up his committee for the twenty-fourth, for next Wednesday. If, um, they are able to meet at six o'clock next Wednesday, would this board like to consider meeting right after them and perhaps at six-thirty to sign off on those because the vouchers will be due the following Monday?
That, so next Wednesday at six-thirty?
Yeah.
Well, that's fine.
I'll, I'll put that in tentative then.
That could be.
Can you be here just to sign a voucher?
Yeah, I guess so.
Take what, ten minutes?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, um, and then last, I think I had included it in an email. I will be out of the office the week just before, the Fourth of July. There's the extra Monday in June, so normally we'd have an extra week to post the agenda, but if we could get the agenda, um, in by that Wednesday, the twenty-fourth, that would be great.
Okay.
Just keep on the same schedule.
Yep. That's next week.
Yeah, next Wednesday. Yeah.
School's over, summer's here, and it'll be gone before we know it. Okay.
Actually, I do have one more thing. I did get a call, um, at long last from Ed Peliquin, who is the new business agent for the union. Um, our fire contract expires June thirtieth. Um, one of the full-time off, uh, firefighters has been out for a considerable amount of time, so that's kind of been held up. And they've asked for some additional time, but what they would like to do is continue the terms of the current agreement with perhaps some consideration given to wagers, uh, to wagers only.
Okay.
Um, would the board like to meet an executive session before or after the next meeting to discuss the details of that or?
Yep.
Yep.
Absolutely.
Would you like me to have Chief Landry?
Absolutely. I want the fire chief involved.
Is that, remember we spoke about that gentleman, that one gentleman that's out? There was some rumors going around from other people.
Why don't we discuss that in executive session, please?
Well, I'm not discussing, I'm just asking if he's, if you were able to speak with him.
I, I turned it in today.
Okay. That answers that question. Thank you. All right.
Okay, so I will, I will let the business agent know we'll be discussing this July sixth. And then we'll get back to them after that. And that's all I have.
Okay. All right, uh, old business, we have GM, uh, CM Geeks Incorporated, who is our new, um, uh, IT, uh, management company, so, and there was an insurance requirement.
Right, this is standard of all the contracts. The town's standard contract with our vendors includes a professional liability insurance requirement of one million dollars.
Yep.
Um, and when Mr. McKenzie signed our contract, he didn't realize that his own insurance didn't cover that amount. And when he contacted his insurance agent, he was told that that's usually for large companies or companies with many more employees. Um, and he asked if the town would consider waiving that. So we checked with Town Council and Town Council did not have a problem with it, um, given the value of the contract, which is about twelve thousand dollars a year. Um, and he also felt that the gentleman's general liability insurance would cover, um, any damages or injuries, um, caused by his company. So, uh, Mr. Brackett, um, did support the board, uh, board voting to waive the one million dollar professional liability insurance requirement of the contract dated May fourth with CM Geeks.
Okay.
Okay.
I would need a motion, yes.
Yep.
I make motion that we waive the one million dollar bond from, who's that?
CM Geeks.
CM Geek, Greek name.
Dated May fourth, two thousand fifteen.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have, um, rat- holy god, excuse me. Ratification by the BOS on previous vote. So.
I don't know if you'd wanna hold this, Mr. Chairman, well, or Mrs. Wing?
Yeah, we could. We'll push, push this to next meeting. Everyone good with that?
Yeah.
All right, next, new business. We have a toll day here. Requested by Catherine Robinson on the Centennial Committee for June twenty-seventh, and that'll be from nine to one. There was a couple things in the email that you said.
And they have fulfilled those requirements. Yep, those are taken care of.
Okay. All right, so, look for a motion to accept toll day for the Centennial Committee to be held on six twenty-seven from nine to one, nine AM to one PM. And, um, and that'll be, excuse me, uh, at the usual Central Street.
Show move. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, uh, Members' Forum, Mr. Reposa, request for assistance from DLS.
Okay, that's, uh, that's, uh, actually been done. And, uh, DLS is gonna come in at no charge and, uh, do an audit.
Yep.
Initially, uh, my thought was to limit it to three items, but, uh, in discussion that evening, um, we're just gonna go follow them. Those reports are quite extensive. They anticipate that, uh, they'll be able to start in about a month. And it'll take them two months or so after that to complete the final reports.
All right. We can budget no charge.
Budget no charge.
All right.
And after speaking with, uh, people from surrounding, uh, other towns, not e- not necessarily this area alone, uh, they highly recommend that we would do that kind of thing.
Mm-hmm. It's a smart, old businesses do it.
Yep.
And this is a business. Okay, well.
The other thing, an all-board meeting.
Yep.
On, uh, the Fourth of June, I attended a Conservation Commission meeting. And the, uh, Amy on, on the committee recommended that, um, or suggested that we get several boards together in a group meeting so that we all understand all the requirements that are going on. Particularly, the two main, uh, agenda items for discussion would be, uh, one seventy-one Central Street and the other one would be the Thayer Street, Millville Heights.
Yep.
Uh, issue. And, uh, the, what was, what she recommended was that, um, Planning Board, Assessors, Public Safety, uh, Legal, uh, people all be involved in that, and that there'd be a moderator to moderate the, the meeting. The Conservation Committee, uh, Commission, uh, didn't wanna take on that responsibility of moderating the meeting. The, um, the suggestion was that, uh, it'd be off-site, maybe, uh, elementary school. And I suggested maybe that the, the town moderator would moderate it. And, uh, the Commission's suggestion, uh, was that, uh, every, every entity that participates in that meeting come away with an action item relative to, you know, conservation issues, DEP issues, uh, building issues, and that kind of thing. So this would be like, uh, bringing the all-town government meeting together at one time with those boards.
Yep.
So, the, uh, residents of one Central Street, uh, of, it, one Cent- seventy-one Central Street area also supported it, it, that, that, uh, meeting. So I would look for a motion to, to consider that type of meeting.
Yeah.
You know, there are bylaw issues that need to be.
Yep.
Looked at.
Mm-hmm.
Discussed. So at least the whole town comes together on those things, so the, the chief know, has, knows where, exactly where he stands.
Right.
This one exactly.
Is that your motion?
That's my motion.
Okay. Second, all in favor?
Huh?
Aye. So, okay, so we'll have, um, I hate to wait two months for DLS's, uh, report, but that would be a handy tool to have.
It would be a handy tool, but, uh.
We could do a pre-meeting, I guess.
Yeah, particularly with, with, with the planning board, the building.
Yeah. Yep, and then, once we get the report, then we'll, you know, have another meeting, that's all. We're gonna have to anyway.
Right. So I hate to keep piling on meetings, but I think in these, these things need to be done and addressed.
That's what we signed up for.
Any particular date, uh, do you have in mind or?
Looks like July might be a wash.
I'm on vacation July fourth week and then the third week in July also.
Like I said, looks like July's a wash.
Can we target first week of August?
Yep, I can, I mean.
I can. Just don't make it a.
We'll try for a Monday. Cause that's Bob's best day. Don't make it a Tuesday through Thursday.
Did you wanna try for the second Monday, um, not the, the same evening?
Right, cause I'm, the first Mondays are me.
At seven o'clock again or?
I think so. That's easiest for most people, right, seven?
Uh, and the idea of, uh, a moderator like the town moderator with.
Check with Mr. Davis.
Mr. Davis.
Yeah, we'll ask him if he's willing, then we'll.
And if he.
You'd still like to use the school or did you wanna hold off on using the school for this particular?
This one? Yeah, maybe, well.
How about the senior center? If they set up tables and a U or something?
Yeah, that works all good. That's, we've had meetings, they've.
Yeah.
Needs to start utilizing that. More often, Joe. Good point. It's easy to get to him, just got plenty of parking.
And it worked very well this past, last week, where they had like twenty-eight seniors graduating, they had lunch. It was plenty of room.
Yeah. And then, I mean, it, if, if we do it something like a town meeting where each committee or board that is gonna be attending would like to, uh, put an agenda item out there to be discussed. And then Mr. Davis, if he's willing to do it, can, um.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah.
I mean, I, I don't want this board to run, to be putting all the agenda items. Somebody else might have a bigger and better idea than we do, so.
But is it the board's intent to really focus on the, um, the two action items? The, the one seventy-one Central and Millville Heights?
That was.
Just for those two specific?
Yeah, those, yeah. That'd be the, the agenda and then there'd be some sub.
Yeah, okay.
Agendas under.
And would you like Town Council invited to attend that as well?
That first one?
Yeah, I.
Yeah, I, I would. We should because they're gonna set us in the right direction right away. And then by then, and then, you know what, by then she'll have her feet.
Right.
Good six, six weeks. Yeah, yeah, her feet'll be wet with that, for sure.
And, um, speaking of Town Council, I am meeting with Barbara St. Andre on Tuesday, next Tuesday afternoon. If any of you have anything that you'd like me to discuss specifically with her, just let me know.
Okay. All right, um.
Thank you for your support.
All set?
Yep.
With that. So, next we have final public forum. So our next regular meeting, July sixth, seven PM. And the agenda will be finalized by June twenty-fourth. A little, a little early, but, uh, I think we can handle that. And then we're gonna next do our signatures and then we will adjourn immediately following. There it is, DLS. I knew I had it this. I just read it. Early July, so. May give us some correspondence before I meet. may give us some correspondence before I meet. Verbal stuff, anyway. That would be nice.
This, uh, this guy's sister.
Oh, that might help?
Yeah. He says he's very partial to the town, he makes down.
Good night Valerie, thank you.
Excellent, that's good though. Some guy Jerry called me today, three times.
Who?
Some guy Jerry about a jacuzzi.
Yeah.
Know what you've been doing, he's not home. I know. He's just not home.
Called while I was here.
Oh, tonight?
While this afternoon.
Oh.
And I was busy, and then he called again while I was here.
Yeah, well, he's in the hat.
I missed it. It was three warrants, you know that? One?
You get three, how is that?
Hmm? Three warrants. Two payroll and one vendor.
Vendor.
Huh?
They don't sign one. No, the warrant.
Two.
Exactly.
There should be, there should be a third one in there.
That's what I thought. I thought it was me, so.
Might be over there.
Do you have a warrant?
I do.
Uh, we already signed one, that's why, Joe. Passed early.
Who?
Sorry, Bob. I thought I was crazy for a minute. Well, I am, but. Some say I am. Okay, motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. All in favor?
Thank you.
Aye.